Before we get started, I just wanna ask everyone if we can please place your phones on silent. And remind you that if you come up to talk, to speak on Call to the Public, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. With that said, I'd like to call this meeting, the September 3rd, 2025 Board of Supervisors Meeting, to order. And Alan, you want to lead us in the pledge, sir? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to Item B, adoption of the agenda. Mr. Manager, good morning.
Mr. Chair, good morning. Members of the board, good morning. One change to the agenda. We're gonna move Item 23 from the consent agenda to action items. Thank you.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda, moving Item 23 from consent agenda to Item 8, action items.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented and allow the sheriff to debate as necessary.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item C, Call to the Public. Kathy Campana. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Morning.
I'm Kathy Campana from Rio Rico. And since I'm the first to get up here and tell you what you're doing wrong, I thought I'd come up and tell you what you're doing something right. I passed the guy sweeping the trail this morning. It's been better kept the last couple of months, and I appreciate it. Thank you Supervisor Fanning.
Thank you. Was that hand sweeping? Right afterwards. Thank you Kathy. Anyone else wishing to come up on Call to the Public? Okay. Anyone online? Well, I guess we don't do online anymore, right? Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to Item D, current events. Supervisor Davis, good morning, sir.
Good morning. So, I just wanna thank the Socorro Hernandez. She's the original owner of El Sarape and her family. Because last week was my last cafecito, four in a row, that month. They were very welcoming. And I got to connect with a lot of people in the community, so I wanna thank them once again for everything. Also, we, Shannon and I, okay, we started working with, with some students, some high school students. So, two former students of mine and two new students who wanted to do their community service. So, they came and I'm very happy they're doing their community hours here with us in the county, right? And there's other students that already emailed me, so maybe, I'm starting to see that flow, you know, of young people coming and wanting to be part of the county and working with us, doing community service. There's a student who wants to do an internship, so we're working on that as well. And I got a chance to go to the overdose awareness event last week. So, there was one event on Monday at the Crossroad Mission, and then on Friday at La Placita. So, it was, it was basically very emotional for people. It was done to the SOSA consortium. And there was like Hope, the Crossroad Mission, Arizona Network, and people got to get a lot of, got to get a lot of information if they're struggling with substance abuse. So, it was very good for me to be there.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Good job. Vice Chairman.
Yes, sir. Good morning. I wanted to thank Kio Taylor and a few other folks from the eastern portion of the county. I was able to, to go on a tour, another tour with them last week, so thank you. I also wanna thank Under Sheriff Castillo and the team, especially those who are working the 911 system last week, or excuse me, last meeting, it was brought up, you know, some of the concerns associated with the 911 system. And, you know, after speaking with Under Sheriff Castillo and then Telecommunications Supervisor Ms. Huerta, we have a great system. You know, we only have one 911 system, although there are two PSAPs. So, that was enlightening for that, that meeting yesterday. So, thank you so much to you and your team for all that they do. I wanna thank Ms. Campana. I was part of the, I was here during the last planning and zoning meeting. Thank you for your leadership and, you know, based on our consent agenda today. Thank you for continuing with your, with your leadership and your knowledge base. So, they, they did a wonderful job, and we'll see what comes out of the, the next planning and zoning meeting. Part of the emerging leaders opening ceremony, we all had an opportunity to be there with Dr. Martinez. And we got some great kids coming through the system, once again, for the second portion of the emergent leader. So, I'm excited about that. And then yesterday, thank you for your leadership, Chris, during our CPBA four-hour meeting yesterday in Patagonia. So, that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I also had a busy week as well. Before I, I get started, I wanna thank IT because they've done an amazing job. They put up an extra camera. They've got a really good setup right behind that mirror window there. And I just wanna commend their efforts and thank them. I also wanna thank Shannon. Shannon did an amazing job with our newsletter. And, and, you know, she's just doing a great job. Thank you, Shannon. We really appreciate your work. Going into some of the activities, we had this last, the last couple of weeks. We all attended the Emerging Leaders. That was presented by the University of Arizona Cooperative Extension, Dr. Rolfo Martinez. And it's, it's a great program for Santa Cruz County youth. And really intense training. Last year, out of forty-five, only fourteen made it through the whole process. So, this year, they've selected fifty-five, and I believe one is from Mexico. So, they're including our neighbors, which is nice. Good luck to all the kids. We, we all attended. I was there and I spread the word out at a really interesting event that was spearheaded by Stephanie Bermúdez, a former student of mine, who's doing a great job as a leader. She brought the Moonshot Rural Arizona Pitch Competition to Santa Cruz County. And basically, you pitch your company, and it's a competition. And they go up to Flagstaff, I believe, and they're gonna select somebody. And I think the Arizona Commerce, or, or, I don't know who's forking over ten thousand dollars to the winner. But it's a great competition. It's good to see a bunch of people pitching their efforts and, and their ideas. And Arizona Commerce was there, people from Flagstaff. So, it's, it's good to see ingenuity and new ideas coming to Santa Cruz County. One other thing, get out and vote. I wanna thank Alma and Anita, our recorder, Ms. Moreno, because they're, they're getting going with their efforts and wish them luck with their campaign on this election. And that's all I have. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I failed to mention, I was able to volunteer at the recent rodeo in Sonoyta. And I wanna just thank Lacey Bear for doing an incredible job there and not, to remind everybody of the upcoming fair in about a week and a half.
And one last thing, I'm taking an idea from Luis Carlos. I'm doing Breakfast with Bugs this Tuesday, September 9th, at Nichols Diner, thanks to Nick. Just something different. And I, I just love what Luis Carlos did, and I figured I'd copy the idea and do something in District 2. And that's all I have. It's from eight to eleven, September 9th, Tuesday. Thank you, sir. Okay, Item 2, Managers' Report.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you for your support in passing the budget and going through the process with us. As you know, we've been doing Government 101, a series of them, where we go to the community, explain to our constituents where our taxes that we receive and how they are applied to, to our operations. You've heard me over and over tell you that, you know, we're unique when it comes to being a county. We are the overarching government agency that provides services that are mandated by the state. That's important to know because there's, you know, with that, that's our number one function. We always have to make sure that we're providing those functions. So, by, by me repeating that again is... So, by, by me repeating that again is, we're starting with Shannon's help and the newsletter of, you know, promoting our constituents and people to shop locally. That's the best way where our constituent can support the county and some of the services that we provide if they spend their dollars here. And saying that, there's upcoming county, what do I call them, plans, events that are, we're going to start planning so they could be voted on or considered next year. And one of, the first one is the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan i- is a community development plan. It looks at the zoning throughout the county. And it provides opportunities to develop. Some are permitted, some are conditionally permitted. But it's our, it's our one document that we're able to look at and provide options so that our community could grow, and I'll use your words, smart, you know, grow smart. So, that's the first one. The second one is the expenditure limit. The expenditure limit is a limitation of how much a county could spend. We, we as a county don't always get to choose businesses or operations that come to our county. You know, there's a border wall being constructed. We don't have no say, we don't get permits. But it's important for us to be part of the conversation so we can, to the best of our ability, protect and inform our constituents. So, we're doing that. And, you know, we, we have a mind that's developing. It's important for us to understand what the impact to the county is and where the opportunities to protect are. With that being said, the impacts that it will have to our county, it's something that we must understand. And Mauricio and myself are looking at some of the, you know, some, some of the different revenues that are going to come into that. That's going to allow us to provide better services and hopefully, you know, expand a little bit and, and provide some much-needed road maintenance and parks and community, community gathering places. So, with that, I just want to bring that to your attention. And if anybody has any questions regarding how we work, how our taxes are applied, please send them our way, don't hesitate. Mauricio and myself will be happy to speak with them individually or as a group, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, can I add something real quick?
Yes.
Yes, and I forgot to thank the Noel Garcia and the Nogales Rotary Club. Because last week, we got to meet with them and did the Gov. 101. So, so thank you. Here's a member from the Rotary Club, so pass the message. I know you're from Rio Rico, but you can pass them to the one.
All right, thank you, sir. We'll go ahead and move on to item E, department reports and activities. Item one, finance, cash and investments, expenditures and revenue reports. Mr. Chavez.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Pay your water bill yet?
That's, that's next on my list, absolutely. Good, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, members of the community. The cash and investment report, the general fund has an overall balance of eighteen million, six hundred, ten thousand, two hundred and six with an investment amount of sixteen million, three hundred, eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six. The road fund has an overall balance of five million, seven hundred, thirty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine with an investment amount of five million, sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-five. Flood control district fund, overall balance is two million, four hundred, ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two with an investment amount of three hundred, five thousand, four hundred and seven. And our Dale District Fund has an overall balance of five million, seven hundred, eighteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight with an investment amount of four thousand, four million, three hundred, fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three. Total for all funds, we have fifty-four million, seven hundred, sixty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-one with an investment amount of twenty-eight million, two hundred, seven thousand, seven, six hundred and sixty-seven. And an estimated end of the, end of the month balance of four million, six hundred, three thousand, three hundred and eighteen.
Any questions, gentlemen? Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item two, any other departments wishing to report? Mr. Treasure, good morning, sir. Nope. Okay. Item three, any awards or recognitions, Alma? No? Okay. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to recess general session, move into flood control.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Good morning, Alan.
Good morning, Chairman.
How you doing, sir?
I'm doing okay, thank you.
Good morning. So, this is the flood report, including the month of August. And pursuant to Supervisor Fanning's request, the monsoon has returned.
He requested the monsoon to return?
Yes, he did. So, they have returned, thank, thank goodness. However, we are still not seeing our average amount. The average amount of rainfall to fall in August in Nogales is right around four inches. And we received just, just under three, so about twenty-five percent reduction of what we're kind of used to. However, all the stream gauges and, excuse me, all the precipitation gauges within the county did receive rain. And so, we have moved from a severe drought, from an extreme drought to a severe drought, just depending on where you're on in the county. So, things are looking better that way. So, we're also expecting a little bit more rain in September and perhaps a tropical storm coming up. So, we're keeping an eye on that. Flood hazard information requests, the district received a hundred and eighty-three in August. A hundred and fifty-nine of those were in Santa Cruz County, unincorporated Santa Cruz County. Twenty-four in Nogales and there were none in Patagonia. The district received sixteen floodplain use permits in August, eleven of them in Santa Cruz County and five in Nogales. We did not receive any site reviews and, and we did not receive any drainage complaints, which is good. Moving on to projects, Ephraim Canyon Project, we do have an update. Our consultant, CMG, is assisting the county by providing an alternative structure to meet some of the objectives of the FEMA grant. Several concepts have been analyzed while CMG is vetting hydraulic feasibility of concepts. County is working with DEMA, Department of Emergency Management, to determine the next steps. Patagonia Regional Flood Control Project, there was not an update with that particular project. Moving on to the Portero Creek Letter of Amendment Provision. There are some updates there. The county received FEMA comments on seven, three, twenty-five. So, the, and then our consultant, CMG, responded to the comments and resubmitted those comments on August eighteenth. And the project is awaiting additional comments or approval. So, those, those comments went out to FEMA and let's see what happens after that. Hopefully, we'll be looking for an approval there. Santa Cruz County Floodplain Ordinance, there was no updates on that particular project. We are looking at perhaps another project, it's Catalumpi Canyon. So, Catalumpi Canyon is being analyzed at a high level for a tenuating structure similar to the one in Ephraim. So, potential to tend to bond. Catalumpi Canyon currently creates a large floodplain footprint as it approaches I-19 and overtops I-19 distributing flow in multiple directions. A memo will be produced by our consultant to summarize the feasibility, helping the county to pursue, excuse me, pursue future funding if warranted. At the time of report, the town of Patagonia did not send a report over. They, their flood and flow committee has not met the last couple of months and they are going to meet in September. And there was no report from the city of Nogales.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Quick question. Do we have an update for the starting the project of the different canyon? Do we have any idea, like when would it start?
I, I don't. I could check with Jesus or Leonard about, you know, what the, what the project is looking at like at, at this point. Right now, we're still looking at some alternatives in design, so.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, so the initial concept was to do a dam-like structure. When we analyzed that concept, the cost was significantly higher than when we originally asked for the grant. So, what we're looking at is a different concept, it's off-channel basins. They would basically do the same thing, but it would not be, the concept eliminates a jurisdictional dam, which eliminates the, the need for accounting for the five-hundred-year event. So, we're optimistic and we're working with AZ DEMA and FEMA to, I wouldn't, it'd be an update to the scope of work. And once it's approved, the engineers will design it. And optimistically, we should be in construction within a year, year and a half.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn flood control. Oh, do we have any public comment, I'm sorry? Okay. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn flood control and move into our item G, study session.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We're now in item G, study session. Item one, Rio Rico Community Days by Tony Bartola. How you doing, sir?
Spectacular. Good morning Supervisors, Department Heads. Thank you all for allowing us to come before you today. And special thanks to Shannon for arranging and getting us on the agenda. Over thirty years ago, the Rio Rico Rotary Club held an event in Rio Rico at the Fitness Center called Community Days. It was a two-day event, I was not present in Rio Rico at the time, so I'm, I'm a little vague on the details. But I know this is an event that is very near and dear to Supervisor Fanning. It is the event where he met his future and current bride. So, it's a, it's an event that, that he holds very dear. It was a two-day event that was a fundraiser for the Rotary Club. And it went on for a few years and then became too much work for the Rotary Club and it just kind of faded away. Well, recently, we have had a lot of new members in our Rotary Club and some of them were present, were, were children at the time of that. And they said, we need to get that back together. And so, Ms. Gina Peters from our club is heading up the program. And they, we have gotten together and decided that we don't want to run it as a fundraiser. We would like to see it as in a community event where major organizations in Santa Cruz County, especially in the Rio Rico area, can get together, showcase their company, showcase what they are doing in the community and just have a, an event that would bring in a lot of people. And the reason we are here today is that we feel that Santa Cruz County would be a major portion of that. And we are asking for you to consider becoming a partner of planning and the execution. We are not asking for any money. We're not asking any of the organizations for any money. We're just asking that they come and participate and provide different activities, free activities, for the community to become involved in. And I gave to Alma a handout that says some of the things. It would be held in April, Saturday, April eighteenth. It would be just a one-day event, starting around nine o'clock to three o'clock, setup would be earlier. And we would invite and depending on how the, the county reacts and to our proposal, we would like to invite other major companies and organizations to participate. The other major would be the Santa Cruz School System, Mariposa Community Health, Unisource, Liberty Water, South Thirty-Two, the Rio Rico Property Owners Association, major organizations, and then all of other nonprofits in, in the county to come and showcase. And we feel that this would be a great opportunity for Santa Cruz County to highlight all of their departments and to also perhaps create an environment that you can hold different town halls. You had the, the Finance 101, that Supervisor Davis mentioned that they presented to the Nogales Club. You also presented to the Rio Rico Club. And we thought that was a very informative event of, that got information out to public that they didn't know. So, we thought you could do that there, while you have a lot of people in the area. Supervisors could use that opportunity to hold the town hall, while you have a lot of people in the area. So, different activities would be going on throughout the day. And at the location is at the Fitness Center on the corner of Cota Monday and Pendleton. And we have already talked to the current owner and he is, he has okayed us to use that vacant corner, yeah.
No charge?
Yeah, no charge. I know, that's the same, that's the same reaction that, that I got. But he is, as long as it's held for the benefit of the community and not as somebody to use as a fundraiser to make money. So, we would invite all of that, the Sheriff's Department, the fire departments in, in Rio Rico, to showcase and highlight some of the things and then have other activities going on. That would bring people in, food trucks, maybe a few little carnival rides for little kids. You know, nothing major, just a couple little things. Ask some of the other organization and clubs, car clubs, the RV clubs, to come and just display. Another reason to get a lot of people there, all for different reasons. And allow these organizations to showcase what they are doing.
Perfect, great.
So, anybody have any questions? We have, we have spoken with Mr. Young and Shannon and they kind of gave us a thumbs up to go ahead and bring this in front of you. They thought that the basic idea, we haven't gone very much any further because, again, if Santa Cruz County is not able to participate in any way, that's going to make it a little bit tough for us to, to, to go through this.
No, count on us. I, I think it's a great idea. I know Shannon, Jesus and I have had these conversations over the last year about having something in Rio Rico.
Yeah, there isn't anything. I mean, the last two years, the Rio Rico Rotary Club has done the Christmas tree lighting and the Garrett's Plaza. And we saw the, the reaction from the community. And, you know, Nogales has the fireworks, they have all these other things going on in Nogales. But Rio Rico really doesn't have a lot for the, bring the entire community together. And we want to allow the major, major organizations to highlight and showcase and get out their information to a large group of people all at the same time.
Great. Great, well, we're on board. I know, I'm speaking for myself, but I'm, it's a great idea and.
And with me as well. Thank you.
Fond memories. I, you know, I, as a fledgling PE teacher, back when the, when I actually took part in the Community Days, I actually had a student, Victor Diaz, you know Victor, Dr. Diaz. And he is, he, he remembers, I had a big baseball card collection. And I just basically gave it out to some of the, some of the students, you know, for tickets or what have you. And he remembered that. And that was over thirty years ago. So, some fond memories, some great, it's a great way to bring the community together. And celebrate.
That was our idea and again, keeping it at no or very, very low cost. There would be just a smattering of vendors around, so it wouldn't be a big pop-up market type of thing that you'd, that normally see. We just have a couple of vendors, a few food trucks, a couple of different things. We had talked about maybe a softball tournament or a kickball tournament featuring the elementary schools, getting the school involved with their high school dance team, the bands. Just activities that would bring people out, bring them out and give them something to do and get them all in one place at one time.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I have one question. What's, when, when do you are planning to have the event?
April eighteenth. It would, we would. It would, we would like to kick off with a pancake breakfast, get one of the organizations. I know the fire department has done a pancake breakfast, the property owners have done pancake breakfast, to kick off the event with a pancake breakfast, and then roll on, starting between nine and ten o'clock, where, you know, give the organizations time to set up during that time, and just a half-day. We don't want to get too, too enthusiastic about it the first time out, because we're not sure. If it goes well, then that can, that, we can talk about that. But to have the county and all of these organizations, not just showing up, but being a part of the planning process, so that we're not having ten dunk tanks. You know, everybody's going to say, all right, and we want them to have activities for the community, especially the little kids. Bring, bring stuff, if, if you give activities to the kids, the parents, the nanas, and the tatas are going to show up, too.
Great.
Mr. Chair, so it looks like the board, you know, wants to be part, wants to participate in the event. I think the first step is, let's get with SOB Emergency Management, so we, we could start looking at emergency plan for the event, and, you know, that's something that the county will help out, and then we, we could start looking at other events and, and our other in-kind or participation.
Talk to the sheriffs, too?
That's why, that's why Santa Cruz County is a big part of this. If, if you all are not on board, then it's going to be very difficult, because now, now we are into having to make it a fundraising event to cover, cover those costs.
Great idea. I, I, you, you've got our support.
Thank you, Tina, Gina, and thank you.
Thank you very much. I've left, I've left copies with Alma, so if you have any questions, you know, you know where to find me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any questions from anybody? Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to action items. We don't need a-
I can explain it.
Yeah, go ahead, sir. Action item one. Well, actually, actually, it's item twenty-three on our consent agenda. Discussion Possible Action to Approve Grant Agreement Number Three dash zero four dash zero zero two four dash zero two eight dash two zero two five with the U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Aviation Administration for Fuel Tank Replacement and Fuel Farm Improvement at Nogales International Airport in the amount up to five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and authorize the appropriate county official to execute all documents. Is that Mary? Thank you, Mary, as always. Execute all documents pertaining to the agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, if I may, and Supervisors, good morning. This was moved to an action item because it needed not only approval by the board to enter into this agreement, which the attached documents are self-explanatory, but it also needs a specific authorization by the board of who is the representative to sign the FAA documents. The federal contracts are more and more, are pretty much almost exclusively electronic nowadays, and so there's a need for an authorized representative to sign these documents. And Ms. Doll, who is the Special Projects Director, has done an exceptional job in bringing a lot of money to Nogales International Airport. This is just one example. I expect Nogales International to be competing with Chicago O'Hare and LAX soon. The feds are very clear, as a document support, that there's no changes to anything, so we can't edit anything, but they also have very clear guidelines as to how things should be signed. And one of those is that the, that the board should designate who is the authorized representative to sign or docu-sign these, this particular agreement. This is one of a couple that'll be coming before the board, and it arrived with the cover letter and the guidelines, and that you only have a couple of weeks to sign off on this last Friday. So it was added at the last minute. Fortunately, we had the time to be able to put this on and, and, and provide the public with adequate notice, and at this point, then, it just needs not only approval from the board, but also approval that, that authorizes Ms. Doll to be the designated signator. And that's what the motion is, is to approve Mary Doll to sign the docu-sign and agreement for this five hundred and eighty-five thou- or up to five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar grant from the FAA. There is a five percent contribution or match from the county, but it is my understanding that that's already been discussed and, and approved. So I don't think that there's any issues with regards to that. I don't know whether Ms. Doll wanted to add anything to this.
Anything to add? Thank you again. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve and authorize Mary Doll as the signatory.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you again. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to recess general session, move into jail district.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item one, Discussion Possible Action for Authorization to Create and Fill Detention Risk Classification Clerk Position. Is this a budgeted item? Yes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn jail district and move back into general session. Okay. We have a, a motion and a second, I'm sorry. Had a little brain fart there for a second, sorry. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Item J, Consent Agenda, one through twenty-two. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none?
No, no, I have a quick.
Okay, yeah, yeah, go, go ahead.
Really quick, so number, let me see, number five, I think, where was the one that we moved the meeting the time?
Number-
Yeah, number one. So basically, we're going to have a meeting at five-thirty, and it got, it's going to be moved to nine-thirty. So I wanted to see if we can, maybe the following meeting from that one, we could have another, like, try it at five-thirty so that, because it's been the same thing that people have said, like, they want to try to see if they could come. So, because we're going to move that, because we have the meeting, right, up in Phoenix. That was the reason that we moved that meeting, so I wanted to see if the following one could be moved instead in the morning at five-thirty.
Why don't we do it September twenty, twenty-eight? Is that okay? I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Let's give it a try and see what happens.
No, 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 we are, we are. The only reason, can, can you hear me? The only reason we moved that is because there's conflict with our, our meeting up in Phoenix, our small counties meeting. That's the only reason we didn't have it. And yes, absolutely, let's, let's reschedule it, please.
That's what we're first to the evening?
Sure.
Just, just keep it real, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, that we do have scheduled study sessions on that date, so I just need to coordinate with those individuals, just to make sure that we can, and I will add to the, um, we can't have it.
Thank you. Sure. Sure, I, I have no problem with that. Okay.
And I, I just, for number four, once again, thank you, Ms. Campana, for continuing with the planning and zoning. Thank you for your leadership.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. I believe we just have one item, K, Adjournment. Entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We're now adjourned. Thank you. Good meeting, gentlemen.